To another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the March 25th meeting of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Those of you who have an agenda can see under the appointments what we have before us. I don't think it's necessary for the clerk to read that all. And the first item that we're dealing with is a recommendation from the CIC for the issuance of industrial bonds to Bearing Technologies Limited. Mr. Twining, would you care to address the board?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ron Twining, T-W-I-N-I-N-G, and I'm the Community Development Director for the Board of County Commissioners. I'm pleased to report that Bearing Technology is -- went before the CIC this morning for a Chapter 165 Industrial Revenue Bond. And in attendance today, we have Justin Archer from Bearing Technology, Dana Wise, Bond Counsel for Bearing Technology, and Kathy Petry, the Bond Counsel for the CIC, for the Board of County Commissioners. At this point, I'm going to ask Kathy to come up and Justin, perhaps, to come up and talk a little bit to the Commissioners what their intentions are, and then I will come back and give you the recommendation of the CIC and our department.
Thank you, Mr. Twining.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Catherine Petry, P-E-T-R-E-Y. I'm an attorney with Squire Sanders and Dempsey, and we are very pleased to be here in connection with proposed expansion to an industrial facility in Avon, which is owned or operated by Bearing Technologies. The total amount that is being requested for preliminary approval is five and a half million. Of that, approximately two and a half million is for the expansion, and the balance is for the refinancing of bonds that were issued by the county several years ago for the current facility that is in Avon. This is the preliminary approval stage, and simply to show that the county intends that upon satisfaction of a variety of legal conditions, that the county will approve the issuance of the bonds. We will be back in, I don't know, several weeks with a public hearing, as is required by federal tax law, and then the final bond resolution for the approval of the bonds. These are bonds being issued under Chapter 165 of the Ohio Revised Code for an industrial project. They do not involve any pecuniary liability on the -- excuse me, on the part of the county, but are payable solely from loan payments to be made by the company. The company is a for-profit entity, not a 501(c)(3), and therefore, these bonds have no impact on the county's ability to issue bank-qualified debt. And the bonds will be structured as variable-rate demand bonds secured by a letter of credit that will be issued by Bank One, and Bank One Capital is the underwriter for the bonds. If you have -- I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the bond issue or the structure or the financing. I have reviewed the documents that are before you today, and will also be reviewing the financing documents in order to confirm that they contain in them the various identification provisions and other types of covenants and provisions that -- that, excuse me, provide -- I'm sorry, I've totally put a total blank here, but that ensure that the county will not incur any kind of liability, or if the county does run into any kind of litigation or administrative procedures that relate to the bonds, that the county will be indemnified and all of those costs will be paid.
Thank you.
Justin is here to answer any questions that you have about the project.
I'd just like to put him in plug for his company. Justin?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. My name is Justin Archer, A-R-C-H-E-R. Recently, 2003, Bearing Technologies acquired a company, Green Ball Bearing, a manufacturing facility in Cleveland, Ohio, and our intent was to eventually bring that facility under one roof in Avon, Ohio. Therefore, we would need to expand. That is why we're here today. Green Ball Bearing currently has about 45 employees, all of which will be offered an opportunity to come to Avon and become full-time employees under Bearing Technologies' roof. Our proposed date of expansion is to begin this April with a deadline, so to speak, roughly by end of the year is our project goal. Most of the employees from Green, we may have been somewhat conservative on our application. We initially had said that we'd only need about 10 employees. We've since reevaluated, and most likely will need 15 or 20 of those employees. Most of the employees from Green Ball Bearing do not or will not want to come out to our facility in Avon because most of them reside in the Cleveland area. Therefore, we'll be drawing from mostly hourly employees from Lorraine County. Our current facility, Bearing Technologies, has 55 employees with probably 70 percent of those employees from the Lorraine County area, namely Elaria and Lorraine. Any questions you may have, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Justin. Mr. Twining?
For the public's interest, I will again repeat, this project is adding 60,000 square feet to the existing facility in Avon, Ohio. It is a total of investment of $5,500,000. It will create 30 jobs within the first three years or 36 months, and I would like to acknowledge that Mayor Smith is here as well for the first two items from the city of Avon. So, the recommendation of the CIC and the Community Development Department is for a recommendation for approval. Rebecca Jones has reviewed that for our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Twining. But it's your pleasure.
I'll move to approve.
And I'll second. Further discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you. The second item in the agenda, dealing also with Avon.
A proven enterprise zone tax abatement agreement between the city of Avon, Ohio and DM Trinity Development LLC and DM Fields LLC, which calls for $5,605,000 investment in Avon, Ohio for a new manufacturing facility and the creation of 42 new full-time jobs. This abatement will be for 10 years on personal and real property on a sliding scale starting with 75 percent a year for the first one through three, and reduced by 5 percent per year until it reaches 50 percent in years eight through 10.
Mr. Twining?
Again, today, I'm here to represent the Community Development Department and the Board of County Commissioners. I will call on Mayor Smith to come up and make comments on this particular project. In addition, I think that it's important to know that the documents have been reviewed and approved as to legal form by Jerry Ennis, County Prosecutor's Office, and that the schools have both -- both the Avon schools and the Lorraine County Joint Vocational Schools have both been notified, and finally, the city of Avon has approved this by resolution -- or I'm sorry, by ordinance 280-03. So, Mayor Smith?
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning. First, I'd like to say, if anybody, sometime you should drive by MB Industries, the factory that was just on your agenda. It's a beautiful building. It looks more like an office building than it does a factory, and anytime you get a chance to drive down Jay Cox Road, please do. There's some fantastic-looking buildings that are over -- they've put over and above what is actually necessary to produce the products that they have, and they've made a statement with that. The tax abatement is DM Trinity Foods, and that's a company that's out of Texas. They're going to create 42 new jobs in Lorraine County. Things that aren't down here is, they're going to be about $14.95 an hour plus $5.00 and some cents an hour in benefits. So, these are good jobs, non-skilled jobs. They're going to hire new people. They're going to hire most of them out of Lorraine County, obviously. This building is approximately $200 a square foot. It's a food production facility. It has to be under FDA and USDA guidelines, 24-hour guarding because of a lot of things you learn. You know, all of us in Lorraine County are used to heavy production and things like that. When you start getting into the food industry, you find out that the costs of these buildings are astronomical because they have to meet certain guidelines. This is $200 a square foot. The average factory in Avon averages about $65 a square foot. So, we're giving a tax abatement of approximately 62.5 percent over a 10-year period. We're still getting about $10 or $12 a square foot more than we would if there was any other type of factory being built. $200 a square foot is a large amount of money, so we're actually collecting taxes on about $75 a square foot. So, we're still $10 a square foot over what would normally be there if we had a normal factory. These are going to be some very good jobs for the people in Lorraine County, 42 jobs. We're very happy to have them come from out of state.
Environment.
Well, that's probably, and I've made the statement many times, I said 90 percent of what we all do is luck, the 10 percent is don't screw up your good luck.
There you go.
And you have to show, you know, you have to show a willing good working relationship with these companies. And I've said this also a thousand times, there's only about 10 or 12 industrial real estate salesmen in northern Ohio that do the business, and if they have a bad experience in your community, they will not bring another factory back. And that's the scary part of it. It takes five or six years to build up a very good reputation, it takes one bad deal to mess it up, and then it takes you years to come back again. We're building 400 and some houses a year in the city of Avon, and to accommodate with our school system, we have to bring factories in. I know people talk about tax abatement as some type of thing that's evil. A lot of the tax abatements we started on 10 years ago, when I became mayor, are coming off right now. Those taxes are now going to be rolling into the school system, into the county. You have to make hay when the sun shines, so to speak. And five or six years ago, everybody says, "Well, don't give anybody abatement. You're going to, you know, when they fill up, other places are going to come." And I made the statement, the economy of eight, nine years ago was much of an aberration, nine years of economic growth. So, you've got to grab what you can when you can, bite the bull a little bit. Once in a while, you're going to get burned. Most of the time, you're not. We've worked with private industry, MB Industries here, the Archer family, they came to the city of Avon. You work with these people. They want to be here because their families are here. We don't want to force them to go someplace else because they want to come here. So, enough of my preaching.
I just want to commend you.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Shirley, it appears you have a question?
Yes.
Shirley R. Johnson Overland. Mr. Twining mentioned that the schools had been notified. I'd like somebody to clarify to what extent the schools are involved in the tax abatement process. Thank you.
State law indicates that if tax abatement in excess of 75 percent, the schools are to be brought to the table as a part of that negotiation, any public school that's affected in that community. In this particular case, that would include both Lorraine County Joint Vocational School as well as the Avon City School. They have been notified. I will call on the mayor to see whether, since this was below the, or at 75 percent, whether the schools were at that table or not. They were not required to be, but sometimes they are asked or make a present. So, I'll let Mayor Smith respond to that part.
They were informed in writing. They sent back a letter. They were not at the table at this one, but they were informed as a step-by-step as we progress through the process of the tax abatement. One of the reasons why we have what's called a sliding scale of 75 down to 50 percent is the companies normally need their major amount of their money in the first three years for survival. So, we went to 75, and then we got a little bit creative, and we work it down so they can get a lot of their money up front, get their feet on the ground, and get operating. Avon School System has been very supportive. It's like everything else. None of us really love tax abatement. I mean, it's something that you don't want to embrace, but it's the cards that are dealt to you. And I was on the school board for 12 years. We realize that it's one of the evils, but we have to deal with it. Another thing a lot of people don't realize, in the state of Ohio, we have what's called an inventory tax. And I know I heard some people talking about duct tape when I came in. Manco has a $20 million building in the city of Avon, and any one time, there's $43 million worth of duct tape in that factory. They could go to any other state. There's only 11 states that have an inventory tax. They could go to any of the other states, and $43 million of their inventory would not be taxed. They would essentially be having a 60%, 65% tax break without getting a tax break, just by going to another state. Companies like Manco can go to any state in the Union because they distribute through the whole United States. We got Manco because Jack Hale went to St. Edward's High School and lived in Bay Village. That's why we got Manco. Crossville, Tennessee, offered them 100% tax abatement, free property. So, you're, this state of Ohio is competing with a lot of other states that you don't even, they don't even have to give abatement, and they get a better deal. So, tax abatement's an ugly thing, but without it, the state of Ohio would not even be semi-competitive to the ones that were emotionally attached with staying here in the state.
Thank you, Mayor Smith.
It's not as ugly as inventory tax, though. I know that.
Mr. Twining?
The other part of that comment for Ms. Johnston, or Johnson, if I can, we will have later on on the agenda our Tax Incentive Review Council report being submitted to the state of Ohio. We had 41 tax abatements that were reviewed over a two-day period, and during those, we invited all of the school districts for the particular tax abatement that was in front of us. We've done this for five years. I chair that meeting, and it's required by the state, and I will say, the school district that has perfect attendances at those meetings and is always very supportive is the city of Avon. There were, I believe, only, out of the eight or nine communities affected by tax abatements this year, I believe there were three of the school districts, may have been four, that had either school board members or administration present every year, at least one, and we've had occasions where we've had board members as well as treasurers attend those meetings on an annual basis to talk about what has gone well and poorly with tax abatements. And Avon has always had representatives from the school district. Back to the business at hand. This particular one, DM Trinity, the staff and the person of Rebecca Jones has reviewed this abatement, and we recommend approval from the department to the Board of County Commissioners. Again, this is creating 42 jobs over 36 months. It's a $5.6 million investment in a new facility, and it's on a sliding scale, the abatement.
And I will so move for approval.
Second?
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your attendance on these two items.
Number three.
Mr. Cortez has a comment?
Can I beg the indulgence of the board? I was going to wait, but it looks like we're going to end up getting into farther parts of our agenda. We have another piece of economic development that I'd like to, I was going to bring up under my business, but I'd like to ask to bring up now. It has to do with our environmental revolving loan fund.
Aye.
And I would defer to Mr. Twining, and I'll have some additional comments, and we have a presentation for the board to make, and I'm sorry that this wasn't on your agenda, but it just got done within the last day. Go ahead, Ron.
Yesterday at 11:30, and we've been working on this as a staff for about two months, but at 11:30 yesterday, the Solid Waste Committee reviewing the recycling revolving loan fund, a new program, first of its kind in the state of Ohio. We had an application. It was a strong candidate. We have representatives from Prime Industry here today. We'll let them speak a little bit, but the committee made a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to make our first loan in the amount of $50,000 to this company on a very exciting project. We will let the company representatives speak to this, and then I'll fill in any blanks that we think are appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Rich Persico, president and co-owner of Prime Industries, and first of all, I'd like to thank Lorraine County Commissioners for this exciting program, especially Brian Barker. He spearheaded it to us. What we do, we're a manufacturer of plastics and urethanes, and we feel that we can recycle our waste, you know, from in-house, and we can recycle it and reuse it into our own facility, reducing costs and reducing waste into the system. So, we feel that by buying certain pieces of equipment, we want, like to recycle our in-house material, reuse it for packaging and resins and so forth, that we can put back into our products and reuse it. And that's basically what it is. We just felt that recycling is the way to go, and we thought we can save some money by doing this and, you know, reducing wastes, is what we like doing.
Thank you. Would your other gentleman have some comments?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, County Commissioners. My name is Joe Persico. I am a co-owner as well. Our goal here is to take what we are considering as waste and reusing it, and the way we're going to do that is, is that we're going to cube, crush, and pulverize our material to use in two ways. One is to use as a filler in our liquid material, which is foam, which creates a foam and will reduce the amount of waste going into landfills. And a second way we are going to do this is we're going to cube it. Everybody knows what peanuts are. So, what we're going to do is take what is considered waste and cube it into a one-by-one cube to use as, excuse me, to use as cushioning or protective packaging. And with this program, our goal is to put six new employees on in the next three years. And we want to thank the County Commissioners, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, so that you know, first of all, we have a press release that is en route coming over. It will be released to the media and anybody that is here today, as well as the Commissioners that's still being printed out. This is happening rather quickly. But this is a company that exists in the city of Lorraine. It's owned by these two gentlemen. They have had an excellent year. Their debt-to-credit ratio has been reviewed. It's an outstanding company and a very strong application. They are taking what was, up until this point, one yard of cubic waste going to the BFI landfill on a weekly basis and recycling the lion's share of that. Now, we do have an incentive program that we are offering to this particular company. The interest rate was supposed to be set at 3 percent below prime so that the Commissioners know, when the Policy Committee for Solid Waste approved this and submitted it in their plan, they had a ceiling of three and a quarter as the, or a floor of three and a quarter as the lowest interest rate. So, what we have done with this company, since prime is about four-four and a quarter presently, we were hoping to give them a 1 percent interest rate, but that's not permitted in a solid waste plan. They've committed to creating the six jobs. They've committed to removing at least 51 percent, or as much possible, of the current waste from this byproduct from the waste stream. So, they've made that commitment over a 10-year period. And, Brian, what was the third one? Ah, Brian's left. There was another incentive, oh, that they would make all of their payments on time without any delays. If they meet all three of those criteria, then what we are asking is, a part of our resolution, is that the Board of Commissioners, at the end of the ninth year, waive the final year payment. That ends up giving them, if they meet those three criteria for the first nine years, that gives them the effective 1 percent interest rate. We proposed that to the Solid Waste Oversight Committee, and they accepted that, and so that is our recommendation, that this is set up for a 10-year period and that it have these incentives in there. The interest rate for that 10 years is established at three and a quarter, but if they meet those three criterias, then they, you would be, in essence, allowing us to waive the final 12 months of payments. This, the loan documents and everything have been reviewed by Assistant Prosecutor Jerry Ennis, or Acting Prosecutor Jerry Ennis, and has approved it and accepted it as to legal form. So, our recommendation at this point, we're very excited about this project, and maybe Dan Bilman would like to say something because it is his project as well. You know, we're recommending, on behalf of that committee, that the Board of Commissioners award this loan today.
Since this is a cooperative effort.
Well, Commissioners, the one thing that needs to be stressed here is that this is the first loan program of this type using solid waste dollars in the state of Ohio. It's progressive. It accomplishes recycling or the use of recycled products, and it promotes job establishment or other economic development activities. And Lorraine County is once again out there with the first ones doing it. We're not going to be the last ones because everybody's going to see how good this program is. And if you would like to hear from Mr. Bilman, he is available. I'm not sure what he could add to Mr. Twining's repertoire. We also, upon conclusion of your resolution, should you be inclined to support this, we have a check, and we'd like to present a check to the company. They have to take the check as part of getting the money, so they're waiting here for you to make that presentation.
Okay. Well, in that case, I guess, Mr. Bilman, you've been preempted, so do you have any questions, Commissioner Moore?
I don't have any questions.
I'll move for approval of the resolution that's been presented before us.
I will second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, A and C seems pretty much like a given, so the only thing you'll be able to track throughout this in order to get the last year's payments waived is really number B, which is six jobs. And currently, you're saying you're going to create six new jobs?
That's correct.
Okay. And I know Ron will be good at monitoring that, so in nine years, they lose their six jobs, it's just, oh, another year of payments.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So...
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Are you going to present that to them? No, you should present it. I thought it was a real check. I thought you had a real check.
Ron, come on. Dan, come on. Let's go, guys.
I would say also while we're doing this that Brian Barker has been instrumental in this, reviewing this project, working with these gentlemen, and deserves the credit as well.
Well, Brian, come on, Brian. Here's the photo. We have to put all this stuff on our website. We have multiple pictures here.
You get it all?
Your head is not showing.
You say that like it's a bad thing.
You got enough of them? You got a couple? That's three. Four. Get a couple angles. We don't get to do this very often. Please tolerate us.
You can't suck it in this long.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The press release that's been prepared contains a synopsis of what we discussed this morning, so we're hoping that the newspaper will be interested in the press release and give us some...
Six new jobs, Commissioners. $50,000 loan. It's all the money's coming back, and six new jobs up in Lorraine. That's fantastic.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
We'll get through as much as we can before 10:15.
Okay.
That'll be easy.
Job and family services bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Advances and repayments? I can see green forms. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved, with the exception of 582.
Which is?
So moved, with the exception of 582.
Which is?
$25,000 to the chamber.
I'll second with no exceptions.
Any further discussion, Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved, with the exception 232.
Which is?
Travel. For domestic relations out of the general fund for continuing education.
I'll second, agreeing with the exception.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
I don't believe there was any personnel. Is that correct?
There was nothing on the summary sheet.
I didn't see anything.
Move along.
Audit, under the auditor 12, authorizing a refund to Lorraine County Title Company in the amount of $783.60 for an incorrect conveyance fee. This fee was paid in error due to an incorrect disclosure of a sale price of property.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the commissioners, authorize payment $1,000 to be paid to Schwartz, Spence, Boyer and Coole Funeral Home, Lorraine, for services rendered for the burial of indigent veteran Thomas F. Jurgrowski, Jr., in accordance with O R C. 5901.26 through 27s, and the monies have been budgeted from the general fund commissioners account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Children and Families Council, approve an amendment number one to Children's Trust Fund, FYO4, contract between the Board of Commissioners, Administrative Agent for Lorraine County Children and Families Council, and Lighthouse Family Services. This amendment will reflect a recovery plan and will reduce the award amount from $22,276 to $16,726.64 and is effective retroactive to July 1st, 2003 through June 30th, 2004. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Community Development Department, authorize a 90-day contract extension between Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and Camp Dresser and McGee on behalf of the Community Development Department for the completion of the countywide environmental strategic plan. Resolution 02-794, adopted October 17, 2002, approved contract expiring March 30, 2004, and the not to exceed $124,900.
My, my understanding that this is an extension of the time, but there is no dollar increase amount.
That's correct.
Also move for approval.
Second, for the extension of time.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Accept the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council and approve the Turk Report, which includes the review of 41 tax abatement agreements and the recommendation to continue 28 abatements for another year, continue two abatements with amendments, acknowledge expiration of 10 abatements, and terminate one abatement.
And Mr. Twining?
I'm pleased to, to report that we have completed that annual task of the, what we call the Turks or Tax Incentive Review Council. The membership of that is made up by the, the local community, the county auditor's office, or their representatives, school districts in the jurisdiction that are affected, representatives from the Board of County Commissioners, and then the Enterprise Zone Manager, which is myself, and, and I'm accompanied by my staff and the person of Rebecca Jones. If you get the sense that Rebecca is stressed and, and been very active in the last 60 days, you're absolutely correct. It's my pleasure today to, to give you the highlights of the, the Turks and the benefits of the tax abatements that have been issued within our jurisdiction. Again, this is all of Lorraine County with the exception of the city of Elyria and Lorraine. In total, we reviewed 41 tax abatements over a two-day period. We have three new abatements that were issued this year that we reviewed for the very first time. Summit Tool, Thos Project, and Ford Motor Company were the, the three new ones. We had one that was going on that in North Ridgeville Reliance, that we recommended the cancellation or termination of the agreement because the conditions have not been met by the company. And so they're aware that we are recommending the, the termination of that agreement or in support of that. And then in Wellington, we have two projects, Sectional Stamping 2 and Number 3, that we are doing amendments on. We have Mr. Doopy and Ms. Falcone that are here to talk about those amendments briefly this morning to let you know what's going on with that amendment. The good news is, as far as real estate investments to Lorraine County, these tax abatements have allowed us to realize $116,464,399 in new investments in Lorraine County. Under personal property investments, we have realized $209,311,010 in investments. They have created, these 41 jobs, or 41 tax abatements have created a total of 1,681 new jobs, and they have seen to the retention of 3,656 jobs. Now, obviously, they are at various stages of the, the abatement. Some are in their first year and some are nearing their ninth and 10th year. But, you know, we're delighted that the assistance that we are able to, to help companies, and obviously, at the beginning of the agenda, we talked about the two projects in city of Avon and the success that they're having. Other communities are having similar success. Now, back as Mr. Doopy comes forward to, to answer any questions or to talk about Wellington's amendment. Sectional stamping is tied heavily to the auto industry, and it has been a difficult year. They have actually had a loss of one contract unexpected from an auto manufacturer, and they have come to the tax abatement. They were supposed to have between retention and creation a higher number, and they have honestly said that, given the economic conditions that the company and their, the state of Ohio and the nation is in, that they are wanting to amend their abatement to say that between job creation and retention, that they will have 165 jobs. I believe the number in the abatements was 195. Frankly, what we are having in this as a part of the tax review meeting in anticipation of this amendment being accepted at the local level by Wellington Village, then we would include it in our report on a technical and a procedural manner. In the next two weeks, we will have another resolution coming amending the original agreement, just so that the, the clerk and the Board of Commissioners' records are consistent if someone at a later date should check and see. So we will have another resolution. But at this point, these are due to the state of Ohio on April 1st, so we need to get this approved today if at all possible. Mr. Doopy, are there any comments that you'd like to make? He's the village manager for Wellington.
Thanks, Ron. The only, the only comments I have are that we need this commerce in Wellington. We need to continue to support our commerce, especially in these difficult economic times for industries that are related to the auto, auto production. So I, I would beg the commissioners' diligence in this and, and allow this amendment of the abatement agreement to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doopy. Further, Ron, I give.
No, the only thing is that I'm just pleased to announce that through Rebecca and the staff's efforts, that we have done the appropriate due diligence. We would like to thank everybody that participated in the Turks this year, and we are recommending support and approval so that we can submit this report to the state from the Board of County Commissioners.
Now, so moved for approval as outlined.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye. Good job, Ron, and to your staff.
Instruct the clerk to advertise for an amendment to CDBG FY02 Small Cities Program. Notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram on March 26th and April 2nd. Public hearing will be held on Thursday, April 8th, 2004, 10:15 a.m.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Appoint five members to a variance board pursuant to section 4.5.1 of the resolution number 91-417, special purpose flood damage prevention resolution. The terms are effective March 25, 2004, for three years, expiring March 24, 2007. Appoint Karen Laricek, Lorraine County Emergency Management Agency; Robert Eichenberg, Columbia Township Zoning Inspector; Ken Carney, Lorraine County Engineer; Guy Firdson, North Ridgeville Building Inspector; and Carl Schneider, Lorraine County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Also move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Yes? Is it, is it the way that they wanted to have it, was all, everyone's going to expire at the same time? Or does it matter if you have them?
Commissioners, those were initial, initial appointments. Obviously, you could, you could stagger those, those appointments if you wanted to.
Why does it not, that would be? I don't know.
What is the term of the appointment? Is it three years?
Yes.
Yes, Brian would know more.
The term is for three years. It doesn't say in the Ohio revise code whether it needs to be staggered. So we can stagger them if that's the pleasure of the board. Or you can just come back in three years and reappoint. We're anticipating that in, since 1976, when we've had FEMA regulations governed by the state, this is the first variance request we've had at the county level. So I doubt that we will have too many hearings between now and three years. So we didn't stagger for that reason, but you can.
No problem. I just was asking.
Leave them as they are?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Emergency Management Agency, appoint Jeff Young, Sheffield Lake Fire Department, and Douglas Whibbler, W O B L, W D L, W Radio, as members of Lorraine County Local Emergency and Planning Committee, effective March 25, 2004, expiring August 13, 2005.
And that's Doug Wilber?
Wilber.
And I will so move.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, amend resolution number 03-500, adopted June 26, 2003, and resolutions 03-570 and 03-57DD, adopted July 24, 2003, approving and entering to a purchase and service contract between Lorraine County Department and Job and Family Services and Lorraine County Workforce Development Agency for the 2004 Workforce Investment Act Program and Services. This amendment will increase the contract amount of $3,434,532 to $4,351,921, an increase of $917,389.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, authorize various additions and deletions of personnel in Lorraine County Children's Services Department to utilize their Shell Oil Gasoline Credit Card not to exceed 200, and the agency's Master Card not to exceed 2,500 for the year 2004, and the usages for the purchase of gas, oil, and emergency motor vehicle repair for county-owned or leased vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Minister.
Commissioners, you heard a lot of good news this morning. Job creation, tax incentives that are stimulating economic growth, businesses to locate here or stay here. You also created some jobs through a very progressive incentive program. Those are some of the key reasons why we recently received a bond upgrade from Moody's. Maybe a little bit of old news to our friends in the media. We released the news to them yesterday. But for those that may not glean that from the papers, we were very fortunate to receive a bond upgrade in, in some difficult times. It's our second upgrade in the last three years. It is in no short measure to the commissioners' stewardship of this county, to their dedication towards job development, job growth, to planning for those businesses to locate here, for all the things that you've done right in this county. That's what this speaks to, especially given that most people are seeing downgrades right now on their credit ratings, so to speak. I think that this Board of Commissioners is to be lauded. I don't think enough praise can be given to the board for this upgrade from Moody's, for the money it's going to save the county now, for the money it's going to save the county in the future. Maybe nobody else will do it, but I'll do it. And I commend this board for being the stewards overseeing what has been accomplished in the last couple of years, and all the great news we heard earlier, and all the great news we're going to hear in the future, commissioners. Congratulations to you and to your staff. With that, I know we have some other things. I will keep my remarks very succinct this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez.
Do you want to start? Because the first one is at 10:15.
Jerry, have anything?
Let's just.
I have no report.
So it's not putting none on his column here?
Do you have anything?
I have none.
Nothing, no report?
See how fast we're going in?
No business, no new business, forth correspondence.
We'll move away.
Right through it. Second. All right. Mr. Moore, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Okay.
We're voting.
So we'll go to our first appointment at 10:15?
You don't want to do public comment?
No.
Okay.
Unless you do. It's up to the board.
We move so fast, I think we should move on.
Would you read the first?
Public hearing is Hidden Oaks Subdivision, Columbia Township. Lorraine County Engineer by letter dated January 5, 2004, indicated that the developer has requested that the drainage ditch and detention basin with outlet pipes for the subject subdivision be placed on a perpetual maintenance in accordance with O R C. section 6131.63. The detention basin has been constructed for 14 lots in the subdivision. The construction cost of the detention basin and outlet pipe is a lump sum of $10,720. The cost for each sublot is listed on the attached schedule on a per-year basis. Each sublot benefiting from these drainage items shall pay their proportionator share by acreage, which amounts to 5% of the total construction cost of $10,720. The 5% of $10,720 is 536 per year, which will be paid by all sublots. This money would stay in an account through the county auditor's office, which the engineer would use for any repairs or maintenance. Once a year, the engineer's office will inspect the facility and prepare an annual report. The maintenance fee can be collected each year depending on the engineer's annual report of work needed and funds available. The balance in the account cannot exceed 20% of the original cost of construction. If approved, assessments will be put on 2004 tax duplicate, collectible for the year 2005. Resolution 04-54A, adopted January 22, 2004, scheduled a public hearing on February 26, 2004. Mr. Behren, the developer was notified by certified mail on February 4, and the notice was published in the Chronicle Telegram on the February 5 and 12. The hearing on February 26 was canceled due to no quorum, and resolution number 04-152A, adopted March 4, 2004, scheduled this hearing. Mr. Behren, the developer was notified again by certified mail on March 5. The notice was published in the Chronicle Telegram on March 9.
If there's anyone who wishes to testify on this matter or ask questions, would you please stand and be sworn in by the Assistant Acting Prosecutor?
Have you swear or affirm testimony, petition, protest, demand, or appeal to the law of protection?
And the developer, would you come forward with your comments, please?
My name's Rich Behren. I represent all 14 lots in the Hidden Oaks Subdivision, and we would request that all of the lots be placed on the perpetual maintenance according to the Ohio revise code.
Thank you, Rich. John Hamilton from the engineer's office, do you have comments?
No, she has questions.
I see that trustee Ken Roth is here from Columbia Township. He was.
He was.
Okay. He must have been satisfied with what we did before. Since this is a public hearing, any other questions or comments? If not, I move for approval as outlined.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Teresa?
Meadow Ridge Subdivision, Columbia Township. Lorraine County Engineer by letter dated January 5, 2004, indicated that the developer has requested that the detention basin and outlet pipe for the subject subdivision be placed on perpetual maintenance in accordance with Ohio revise code section 6131.63. The detention basin will benefit sublot 1 through 4 and not sublot 5 through 12, therefore only sublot 1 through 4 will be assessed. The construction cost of the detention basin and outlet pipe is a lump sum of $4,634. The cost for each sublot is listed on the attached schedule on a per-year basis. Each sublot benefiting from these drainage items shall pay their pro-rated share by acreage, which amounts to 5% of the total construction cost of $4,634. The 5% of $4,000, excuse me, $4,634 is $231.70 per year, which will be paid by all four sublots. This money would stay in account through the county auditor's office, which the engineer would use for any repairs or maintenance. Once a year, the engineer's office will inspect and prepare an annual report. The maintenance fee can be collected each year depending on the engineer's annual report and what funds will be needed for the needed repairs. The balance in the account cannot exceed 20% of the original cost of construction. If approved, the assessment will be put on the 2004 tax duplicate collectible for the year 2005. Resolution Number 04-54B adopted January 22, 2004, scheduled a hearing on February 26. Garland Griffin Homes, Inc. was notified by certified mail on February 4, 2004, and the notice was published in the Chronicle Telegram on February 5 and 12. The hearing on February 26 was canceled, and Resolution Number 04-152B adopted March 4, scheduled said hearing. Garland Griffin Homes, Inc. was notified again by certified mail on March 5, and the notice of the Chronicle Telegram was on March 9.
Again, if there's anyone who wishes to testify or comment, would you stand and be sworn in, please?
You're already been sworn in. You don't have to be sworn in. I reminded you this long ago. Anybody new who needs to be sworn in?
Thank you, Jerry. Does the developer have comments? Again, Rich?
Yes, we represent, I represent Meadow Ridge Subdivision and also as an agent for Garland Griffin Homes. We would ask that the four lots be put on the perpetual maintenance.
Thank you. Are there any property owners to have comments? If not, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi. Do we have to wait now since it's not 10:25?
Well, is Dave Gill, was he coming? John? You don't know? You have property owners?
I don't know, I was just asking Jerry since the way we got.
We got three minutes, so.
Yeah. I've been drinking water if you don't mind a three-minute break.
Public hearing on Cobblestone Subdivision Number 1 and 2, Columbia Township. The Lorraine County Engineer by letter dated January 5, 2004 indicated that the developer has requested that the drainage ditch and detention basin with outlet pipes for the subject subdivision be placed on perpetual maintenance in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 6131.63. The detention basin has been constructed for 34 lots in the subdivision. The construction cost of the detention basin and outlet pipe is a lump sum of $34,000. The cost for each sublot is listed on the attached schedule on a per-year basis. Each sublot benefiting from these drainage items shall pay their prorated share by acreage, which amounts to 5% of the total construction cost of $34,000, which is $1,700 per year, which will be paid by all sublots. This money would stay in the account through the county auditor's office, which the engineer would use for any repairs or maintenance. Once a year, the engineer's office will inspect and prepare an annual report. The maintenance fee can be collected each year depending on the engineer's annual report of work needed and the funds available. The balance in the account cannot exceed 20% of the original cost of construction. If approved, the assessment will be put on 2004 tax duplicate collectible for calendar year 2005. Resolution Number 04-54C adopted January 26, excuse me, January 22, scheduled a public hearing on February 26, 2004. Nine property owners, including the developer, were notified by certified mail on February 4, and the notice was published in the Chronicle Telegram on February 5 and 12. The hearing on February 26 was canceled, and Resolution Number 04-152C adopted March 4, scheduled this hearing. Nine property owners, including the developer, were notified by certified mail on March 5. The notice was published in the Chronicle Telegram on March 9, and one property owner unclaimed the certified notice.
Again, with this swearing in for those who have not been, and if there are new people who have questions or comments, please stand.
Anyone previously sworn in was contested value as a matter of age and still drove. If they're new, raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony shall give you the truth as you answer God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
Thank you. The developer have comments? Is Steve Gill here?
No.
Engineer's office, any comments?
I'm John Hamilton, Assistant County Engineer. This subdivision's off a station road, and part of it was a construction of a large drainage ditch which replaced the Roth tile and ended into the detention basin and the outlet structure and under Jake Way. And the cost of the improvements was $34,000, so we'll be collecting $1,700 a year for maintenance. That includes the outlet structure, rock around the channel, any erosion that would happen. And also, there was some discussion with Mr. Gill. The ditch runs through backyard areas, and a lot of the property owners are mowing that. The assessments range from, most of them are right around $45. They go up to $78, $90, and $112 on three of the larger lots. But those assessments would be, I guess there's two things that affect them. One is the system will be reviewed every year, see how much money's in it, what works, can it need to be done. Then the commissioners approve the assessment rate for that year each June. And so, the assessments may not be collected every year. If all we have to do is mow and maybe put some spray on it to keep the weeds under control, and we're collecting $1,700 a year, you know, that would probably cover maybe three or four years of that. If it appears we're going to need some rock or some repairs to the outlet structure, then it might be collected for three or four years in a row to build up the money to do that. And then the other thing, if the people maintain the ditch section themselves, there's a, by Revised Code, there's a reduction available of 50%, up to 50% of the assessment if you provide us with an invoice for your, you know, for mowing it and a reasonable invoice for mowing, because it's only, most of the assessments are only $45 a year anyway. But there is a method to, you know, if you take care of it yourself to get it reduced.
Thank you, John. Other comments from anyone in the audience? Sir? Would you come to the microphone and state your name, please?
My name is Dan Flick, sublot 16 in Cobblestone Division. I was just wondering who originally pays to have the detention basin put in?
Developer.
The developer does. And is there any way, we were never notified of this at all, and I think any developer that does build in Lorraine County should let the property owner know that there's going to be some type of assessment. We were never notified by anyone until we received this letter, which I don't think is fair at all. And they, they say that they're only going to keep up to 20% of what the budget is, is that what they're saying, to maintain? So, I mean, it's a brand-new detention basin. What if there needs nothing to be done for like five or 10 years? There's some erosion maybe in five or 10 years. I mean, what if there's nothing?
The rate would vary from year to year. It could be collected for two years and then taken off for the next five.
I understand.
It just depends how much money's spent out of it.
And who decides that? The engineer's office?
We, we inspected and make a recommendation that commissioners and the commissioners approve that rate every June. Property owners can be involved in that process if they want. We can, we can mark down in here to, to go over with you if you want in the spring.
Well, because, yeah. It states on here, now, is this, on my letter, it states 49140. Would that, is that just mine, or is that for?
That's just yours, yeah.
That is just mine. Sublot 16?
Total, total of $1,700.
4914, okay. So, everybody else's can be a little bit different, all the size of acreage.
Right. So, we, we've been mowing these ourselves, and it's only been costing probably an average of about $75. So, and you can see the $1,700 is going to take care of that for quite some time if that's all we need to do.
So, they would just not collect for a year or two at a time? Is that what you're saying? That's what the engineer's office did?
Right, right. We would, we'd recommend a maintenance rate of zero on that particular detention basin.
And have to go on your regular taxes every year? Is that what you're saying? It would be stayed on the taxes? Okay. But I'm just.
What about the other question he had regarding the notification that nobody was notified?
Yeah.
Could you answer that one?
We tried to catch these before there's any lots sold with the developer. In this case, Mr. Gill didn't request it until after he'd already sold some lots.
How many lots did he sell before?
There's about seven owners, I think, other than Mr. Gill.
There's seven people that sold?
Yes.
First, and then he requested it?
Right.
So, really, right now, there's 27 lots available?
That's correct.
That have not been sold?
Right.
Well, no, I'd say about four of them have been, well, they're not, they have sold signs on them, they haven't started building yet, but the lots have been sold. There's about five more lots that have been sold and developed. And I don't know if they were notified. I'm sure they weren't, because they're not going to get a letter until they move in.
Right. And I understand from the person standing up, he might be Mr. Gill, who didn't get sworn in yet. Jerry, would you like to swear him in?
Do you swear that the testimony should give you the truth as you said, asking the guy that are under penalty of law of perjury? I do.
Thanks.
I am the developer of Cobblestone.
Dave Gill, would you come to the microphone, please, Mr. Gill?
I am the original developer of Cobblestone, Phase 1 and Phase 2. When we started the improvements on Phase 1, this was not part of the original okay that we went through. And working with the county on Phase 2, we decided to put this thing on maintenance, which was understood that all the subdivisions are going on maintenance. So, there is a lapse period for Dan Flick here. But I will state for the record, we did send out letters to all of our homeowners, whether they're pre-existing in the whole subdivision, explaining what happened, when the time period happened, and, you know, what it is for and all that. Now, if Dan didn't get that letter?
I think we're good.
But I did send out a letter to all the homeowners, so there, there shouldn't be any misclarification, because nobody's came back to me to ask me why.
It sounds like maybe the miscommunication was when he bought it, he, maybe after.
Yeah, and he was the very first buyer in there. So, I mean, it's, and it did happen after he bought in there. But we did send letters out explaining the situation that the county was going to start putting all the retention bonds or the retention areas, and because of that, the place has got such a severe river quay going through it now, that they're going to start putting this on the maintenance, and it was explained in that letter.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Further comments or questions?
I'm Diane Flick, Subdivision 16, sublot 16. It's my understanding that on the other side of Station, those, that lot is also going to benefit from the detention basin. Are those houses also going to be assessed when they're put in Phase 2? Is it going to be adjusted for what's in there now?
Can you read?
The west side of Station?
Correct.
They'll, the west side of Station will have its own detention system when it's built, and they'll be assessed to maintain their detention basin.
It won't be a part of this one?
Right. Yeah, there's quite a separation between the two subdivisions, so they'll, they'll have a detention system the same as your side does, and they'll.
It's not going to run all into the same system?
Well, it ends up in the same ditch, but it won't run through your detention basin.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, I approve, move to approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Next one is the 10:35.
Thanks for coming in.
Ravens Edge Subdivision Number 2, Carlisle Township. Lorraine County Engineer by letter dated January 5, 2004 indicated that the developer has requested that detention basin with inlet and outlet pipes for the subject subdivision be placed on perpetual maintenance in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 6131.63. The detention basin has been constructed for 28 sublots, or lots in the subdivision. All lots will pay the same assessment per year. The construction cost of the detention basin, the 48-inch inlet pipe and the 10-inch outlet pipe is $47,600. Each sublot benefiting from this drainage item shall pay $85 per year, which amounts to 5% of the total construction cost of $47,600. The 5% of $47,600 is $2,380, which all will be paid by all sub, 28 sublots per year. This money would stay in the account through the county auditor's office, which the engineer would use for repairs and maintenance. Once a year, the engineer's office will inspect the facility and prepare an annual report. The maintenance fee can be collected each year depending on the engineer's annual report of work needed and funds available. The balance in the account cannot exceed 20% of the original cost of construction. If approved, the assessment will be put on the 2004 tax duplicate collectible for calendar year 2005. Resolution Number 04-54D adopted January 22, 2004, scheduled a public hearing on February 26. Three property owners, including the developer, were notified by certified mail on February 4, and the notice was published in the Chronicle Telegram on February 5 and 12. The hearing on February 26 was canceled, and Resolution Number 04-152D adopted March 4, scheduled this hearing. Three property owners, including the developer, were notified again by certified mail on March 5. Notice was published in the Chronicle Telegram on March 9.
Thank you, Teresa. Is there anyone who wishes to testify who has not been sworn in yet? I, I would ask if the developer's here, but I did not. Where, I'm over here, I'm sorry. Would you be sworn in then?
Do you swear that testimony should give you the truth as you say, answer under God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
I do.
Thank you.
Scott Dillon, developer of Ravine's Edge. Any questions, comments?
It's your show.
Oh, you're notifying everybody and?
Yeah, and from the previous case, I might, might add that the problem of notification is probably best resolved by just an addendum to the purchase agreement when the lot is sold. A lot of times what's happening is, is that we've just recorded our plat, and we've got interested buyers, but we're not done with the calculation with the engineer's department. But we've, we've verbally notified everybody that it was forthcoming. The dollar amount typically isn't known when the first couple of lots are sold, as that's a function of the cost to put in the basin. Working with John and Wayne with regards to that, for example, Ravine's Edge Phase 2 would have six, seven lots sold at this point. So, if it could be put as an addendum to a purchase agreement that the engineer's office wishes to see prior to this public meeting, there could be proof that everybody was notified. But Ravine's Edge went pretty smooth. I mean, we, we've got everything understood there, and I don't really have any comments regarding the Ravine's Edge basin.
All right, thank you, Scott. Is there anyone else here who has a question or comment on this proposal? If not, I move for approval as submitted.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
We're going to wait about three more minutes. Scott Dillon is the developer. Lorraine County Engineer by letter dated January 5, 2004 indicated that the developer has requested that two detention basins with outlets and the Finnegan ditch, Quarry Road to State Route 511, be placed on perpetual maintenance in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 6131.63. The two detention basins were constructed for 30 sublots in the subdivision. The drainage ditch, as described, was cleaned and will also be placed in county maintenance. The construction cost for the drainage ditch, detention basins, and outlets is $36,480. The 30 sublots and four budding properties benefiting will be assessed 5% of $36,450 per year, or $1,824 per year. This maintenance costs are listed in the attached schedule and prorated by acreage. This money would stay in the account through the county auditor's office, which the engineer would use for repairs or maintenance. Once a year, the engineer's office will inspect and prepare an annual report. The maintenance fee can be collected each year depending on the engineer's annual report of work needed and funds available. The balance in the account cannot exceed 20% of the original cost of construction. If approved, the assessment will be put on 2004 tax duplicate collectible for 2005. Resolution Number 04-54E adopted January 22, scheduled a public hearing on February 26, 2004. Scott Dillon, the developer, was notified by certified mail on February 4, and the notice was published in Chronicle Telegram on February 5 and 12. The hearing on February 26 was canceled, and Resolution Number 04-152E adopted March 4, 2004, scheduled this hearing. Scott Dillon, the developer, was notified again by certified mail on March 5. Notice was published in the Chronicle Telegram on March 9.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. People wishing to give testimony, anyone who has not been sworn in, would you please come forward? And then Scott Dillon, do you have comments for us?
The only, the only comment with regards to Finnegan Farms, which to date has transferred two lots, both parties have been notified, is that with, with this subdivision, we also dedicated green space to the township to the tune of about 18 acres. They're in the watershed, and they have a proportional share of the maintenance. in the watershed, and they have a proportional share of the maintenance. And then Rain Tree owns the adjacent acreage to the tune of about a hundred and fifty acres that will also contribute. But again, this process went pretty smooth, and I think we're all set, and I don't really have any comments other than that.
Thank you for that, Scott. Anyone else wishing to comment? If not, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
And I guess now we go back to public comments? Public comments. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward, state your name.
Public comment?
Yep.
My hearing is not as good as it used to be. Name, Robert Kish, living in Aleria, and public comment. Some people said eight Cs was too long. And because of Kathy, said I was an activist. Started out as a... So, I went with the civic duty, civic activist. I joined the civic activist team. Anybody's allowed to join. I don't care who. Anybody who's got an ID to make Lorraine County better. Join the team. I was to have a meeting yesterday with the mayor in the rain, and the game was called because of rain. So, we didn't play yesterday. I know if you throw, if you start a journey of a thousand miles, it begins with one step. You throw a rock into a pond, and it sends ripples. Do the ripples end when they hit the shore? I don't know. I do know that there are radio waves that travel, and you can't see them. So, who knows where these ripples end? I had a suggestion for Ely Park because they evidently don't seem like they're going to build the memorial park there. But it could use a little color. And Miss Vossi, Mrs. Vossi isn't here today. I know she works with the school children when she took the bell around to them. And there are many school children in Lorraine County. And I had the thought that Ely Park could use some color. It's a little drab. And there are fifty states, and the US Mint is minting quarters for the fifty states. And I thought perhaps they could mount fifty state flags around the water fountain in Ely Park. They don't have to stay up three hundred and sixty-five days a year. But it might be nice on flag days, or holidays, or what have you, to have the fifty flags of the fifty states flying. And perhaps there are enough children that attend schools in Lorraine County, that those children, or designated children, could write to the governors of each state, and perhaps we could get some of the state flags free. Perhaps. You know, if we can get them free, and we can fly them free around the fountain, so be it. If we can perk up this area, I mean, the city of Aleria could use a little color. If only on weekends and on holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other comments?
I think you provided enough color for Aleria, Bob.
Mr. Twining?
Briefly, just a reminder, tonight at seven o'clock, Pittsfield Township Hall, the watershed coordinator is having its first meeting for those residents south of Aleria, all the way on the west branch of the Black River. We are meeting down there. It starts at seven, Pittsfield Township Watershed Community Meeting. We invite everybody to come. I think the Delta Institute is even providing light refreshment, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Elizabeth?
Thank you for the reminder about today's meeting. Elizabeth Rumix, Oberlin. This is looking ahead considerably. Oberlin City Council at this point has three new members, and the chair of the council is new at the job also, and is learning as he goes along. And so several of us were discussing the fact that there will be two new commissioners come the election, as things now look. And we would hope that there will be some way for a, an extensive, perhaps, orientation of the two new commissioners for this very, very complex and wide-ranging job. And we thought we'd just throw that stone into the pond to get some breakfast coming out.
Thank you for your comments, Elizabeth. Anyone else? If not, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at nine-thirty at the Lorraine County Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Aleria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
for being here. Sun shining, we've got a beautiful day. It's an honor to have you here today. The opening benediction will be presented by Chaplain Bill Davis. Would you please stand and remain standing for the presentation of the flags presented by Southview ROTC, and then it will be followed by the National Anthem presented by Admiral King High School.
Thank you. Our Heavenly Father, first of all, thank you for this beautiful day, and make us truly grateful of these Medal of Honor recipients. In the goodly charities that has bestowed upon this nation because of their unselfish acts. They have helped make this a great nation and the world a better place. Watch over our leaders, our people, and our nation, and keep us ever mindful of the sacrifices made for us by our fallen comrades, and make us worthy of your loving kindness. And may this ceremony bring them the recognition they deserve. And please remember all our service men and women everywhere in the world, and remember all the MIAs and POWs from all wars and conflicts. Amen.
Forward march! Colors, hold. Left, face. Present, arms. Orders, march! Right, face. Forward, march!
Thank you. I don't know about you, but the National Anthem always gives me goosebumps. Please be seated. Today we have gathered to honor those who have received the America Medal of Honor. But we must also recognize the honor, recognize and honor all of the courageous men and women in the past, present, and future that have and will continue to fight for our freedom and the principles for which America stands. At this time, we would like to unveil the plaque, but I would like to take one moment to thank Ken Cromer of Lorraine Library for making it possible for us to display the authentic Medal of Honor, given posthumously to Charles Berry, which is right here, and the picture of Charles is also right near it. But I would also like to ask the family members and relatives of all that we are honoring today to come up and assist us in the unveiling.
Good morning, everybody. As everyone's coming up here, I want at least to recognize the people that did drive here. We have somebody that actually came from as far away as Minnesota, from regarding the Berry family. Richard Berry's here, Robert Berry is here, Maurice Graham and his son Matthew from Marion, Ohio. Janine Rockus and her husband Dan is here from Avon Lake. There was Lee Pritchett and his wife is here from Deerwood, Minnesota. Gene Jozinski is here from Vermillion. And the Berrys that were here are from Amherst, Ohio, and from Vermillion, Ohio. And that is the, the Berrys, first cousins is what I was talking to them earlier today about. They're, most of them are all first cousins. And I'm honored to have you here. Now, not to leave anyone out, I'm a big family tree buff, and I know a lot of people have family trees. If there's anybody else, you know, this is the ones that we could find. Is there anybody else here that is a member of any of the Medal of Honor recipients? Is there, there's two people in the band?
Two boys.
Two boys in the band that if you'd like to come on up, you are to help participate in the unveiling of the plaque. We, we'd be honored to have you up here. Is, if there's anybody else regarding any other members, because this is, this is the family that we could contact to help participate. Okay, if not, then we will proceed to the unveiling. Thank you. What a great day. Usually these events, always somehow we get rain, but today we were very fortunate. Thank you all for attending. I'd like to thank a few people that made this possible. As you keep hearing Sandy's name, she's trying to hide in the back. She really did a good job putting this together, and she had a lot of help. Janice Mokosh, Joyce Parks, Teresa Upton, Marilyn Tracy, Jennifer Demage, and Dave Karpinski, the maintenance staff. We're all instrumental in bringing this thing together. I think, I think it was a very, a very good event. I think the plaque is, it's very beautiful, and it's going to be proud to be here at, in Lorraine County. Let's see what we got here. Also, Commissioner Blair could not make it. Her grandson had a benediction today, and she, she participated in that event at the same time at ten o'clock this morning. So, she sends her regards. But to move along, John Polger is here, the commander of the VFW ten seventy-nine to give recognition of each military branch individually. So, I'd like to introduce John Polger.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. We're going to recognize each military branch individually, and the music will be played by the Admiral King High School Band and the Irish Heritage Pipe Band. And when we play our theme song, would the members of that branch please stand up? First, the United States Air Force, the theme song performed by the Admiral King Band.
I've been missing a few people here, but I want to at least recognize a few of our elected officials that are here today that are also veterans. I see Sheriff Tometti's over here, Judge Foreman, Judge Jozinski, and Judge Galavas, and Judge Zalasky, some of our elected officials that are also veterans. With us today, we're going to have a few speakers, and I'll be introducing them one by one. This next person is, happens to be, was a personal close friend of Charles Berry, and his name is Joe Magazine, World War II veteran. If you want to have a few words, I'll just hand it over to you. I'll say it.
Oh, seriously, I'm not the best speaker of the voice. The truth is, everybody's coming out for the remembrance of these fellows are real heroes in the United States. I hate to say this, but I don't mean ballplayer to be heroes. But all the young fellows know that the ballplayers, they don't go off congressional by the monitor. But we're going to turn that around in a big hurry.
Thank you, Jeff. And as you told me, you were a friend of Charles earlier, right? You were a friend of Charles Berry elsewhere. And with all the family here, if you'd like to come out and talk to Joe afterwards, maybe we could...
Chuck Berry, he was a great Marine, and he was a thunderbolt, and he had a big influence on the whole New York.
Thanks, Jeff.
Next to speak, Walt Morters here, a former...
Next to speak, Walt Morters here, a Korean War veteran. Walt?
The Medal of Honor is the highest award for bravery, above and beyond the call of duty that can be given to any person serving the military of the United States of America. The Medal of Honor was signed in law by President Abraham Lincoln on December 21st, 1861. Since it was first awarded in 1863, 3,410 individuals have been awarded this medal. We are gathered here today to honor five persons who act of bravery, who act of bravery carried them above and beyond the call of duty. These recipients of the Medal of Honor from Lorraine County served in the following wars: the Civil War, Indian campaigns, Mexican campaigns, and World War II. Every generation has its own heroes. Today, our young men and women are engaged and yet under contract. For the first time in history, we have experienced a geopolitical attack against innocent civilians on shores by foreign power. These young men and women are fighting to protect our rights and freedom, so that you have the right to choose, to speak out, and express your own opinion, for or against the public policies of our time. In closing, I would like to paint a few paragraphs that tell the story of how I feel and how you should feel. It's in a song. "I'm proud to be an American, or at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the men who died who gave that right to me. And I gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, 'cause there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA, and God bless our military wherever they will be, and God bless America."